At this moment, if we can all stand for our pledge of allegiance, and we will have Charles, Allison, Matt, if you can lead us in the pledge.
We'll help you out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Sean?
Here.
Lewandowski? Navara?
Here.
Johnson? Ives? Travis?
Here.
Lopez Caneva?
Here.
Next, we have our agenda, our resolutions.
Well, good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite Matt, Charlie, and Abby, come on down, please. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School Engineering students, whereas Lockport Township High School students Elliot McNulty, Matthew Hansel, and Charlie Plouffe competed at the Milwaukee School of Engineering Science Opportunity Conference in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, on November 22, 2022, and brought home the prestigious titles of: Allison McNulty, first place chemistry; Matthew Hansel, third place physics; first place biology; first place overall; Charles Plouffe, third place physics; whereas Elliot McNulty, Matthew Hansel, and Charlie Plouffe have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 19th day of December, 2022. Congratulations, Allison.
Yes, on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations, Allison, Matt, and Charles. Like I said, Dr. Rooney, you know, they expressed it, that you did bring honor and distinction. And I also want to congratulate your parents, too, because I know you've raised awesome students here, and we thank you for this, all right? And at this moment, yes. And I know that at this moment, this is finals week, and I know you guys are, you know, studying, so I will excuse you, you don't, you know, have to stay for their meeting, so, okay? But thank you.
As you want to.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to sup this resolutions? All right, my motion by Dr. Sean, second by Mr. Travis. Roll call. Navara?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Next, all right. Public hearing concerning proposed property tax levy increase for 2022. Prior to public comments, Stephanie, Ms. Stephanie Kroy, Director of Business Services, will explain the purpose of the hearing, and following, the board president will open the hearing.
Thank you, Ann. Since the district's proposed 2022 tax levy is greater than 5% more than its 2021 tax extension, the district is required to hold a public hearing to receive comments from members of the community regarding the proposed increase. Other requirements by law are to publish notice in the paper of the hearing, which was done on December 10, and to disclose our cash reserve balances, which are every month in the Treasurers' report. The proposed increase is 6.04%, 5% of which pertains to the existing property or property within the district that was taxed in 2021, and 1.04% of which pertains to new property or property that will be taxed for the first time in 2022. Despite the high levels of inflation, the property tax extension limitation law restricts the district's tax levy to the lesser of CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, or 5%, unless new property is added. For the last eight years, the district's levy increases were restricted to between a low of 1.57% and a high of 4.88%, with an average for those eight years of 2.93%. The proposed tax levy increase does not mean each taxpayer is being asked to pay 6.04% more to LTHS. The approved tax levy, once the board approves one tonight, will be spread over all of the property values in the district to compute the district's tax rate. The tax rate is the amount per each 1,000 in equalized assessed value that each taxpayer is being asked to pay. The district's tax rate has actually decreased for the last eight years, and is, was in 2021, the lowest rate of the 17 large high school districts in Cook and Will Counties. The proposed tax levy allows the district to do a number of things: balance the district's budget, avoid deficit spending, avoid issuing debt for operations, maintain six to 12 months' cash on hand, keep the district's financial recognition status, and maintain the district's buildings. Now, President Caneva, will you introduce each individual to speak, please?
I'm sorry, okay. Anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing about this proposal must sign in and provide all information requested on the public sign-in sheet. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the signing sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond to issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response does not imply a lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. Every time a member of the public speaks during public comments, the superintendent or appropriate district administrator will contact that individual on behalf of the Board of Education the following day to discuss their concerns. All right, our public hearing starts at 7:08. We can start with Mr. Jeff Prisbal.
My name is Jeff Prisbal. The school district doesn't need to pass the levy at its proposed level. According to the June 30 audit, over the past two fiscal years, the district has had almost $175 million in revenue. After $152 million in expenditures, the district was left with $22 million. In the business world, that would be considered $22 million in net income. The problem is, the school district isn't a for-profit entity. The district has run a surplus, a net surplus averaging $7.7 million annually for the past decade while increasing the levy almost 3% annually. Now let's clarify some terms. From the agenda in tonight's, from the text in tonight's agenda, cash reserve balances for District 205 are the same as fund balances. In other words, these reported balances aren't being held in reserve not to be spent, they are the district's day-to-day operating funds. To paraphrase, later in the same paragraph, "The fund balances at November 30 will need to cover expenditures for December 2022 through May of 2023." Estimated expenditures for December 2022 through May are approximately $36 million. The November 30 fund balances in tonight's Treasurers' reports is $75.2 million. From page 14 of the district's June 30 audit, the district needs, the district will need to monitor its budgeted expenditures carefully and may need to use fund balance reserves in the short term if expenditures begin to exceed revenue collected. So the district acknowledges it may engage in short-term deficit spending. This is probably the most important one. In the Director of Business Services memorandum tonight to the school board accompanying the annual report, we have the following. It also includes approximately $21.8 million in restricted balances for various purposes, which cannot be used for anything other than the named restricted purpose. For those in the audience, that sounds like these funds may be here for quite some time, doesn't it? Do you know how the board and administration feel about this statement? At June 30, the Transportation Fund had $9.7 million, with $9.5 million categorized as restricted. Last month, the administration requested, and the board approved, a transfer of $1 million from the Transportation Fund to the Operation and Maintenance Fund. But that wasn't all. They transferred $2.5 million from the same Transportation Fund to the Educational Fund. $3.5 million transferred when there wasn't $3.5 million in unrestricted funds added to the fund since the June 30 audit. Does this sound like these restricted funds, quote, "cannot be used for anything other than named restricted purposes"? According to the Treasurers' report tonight, there's $75 million in the funds, enough to cover the $36 million in expenditures through May and still have $39 million left over, not to mention at least $5.5 million in revenue expected from other sources. When looking at the board and administration profiles, most of the individuals here have graduate degrees, many with PhDs. That is a lot of education available to the district, not counting years of work experience. I hear at these meetings how some board members feel we do a good job of challenging the students in various ways. I think the board and administration need to be challenged as well. Three of the board members were elected in 2019 and are up for election in April. During their term, Isby's school report card shows enrollment increased by 30 students. In that same timeframe, teacher full-time equivalents increased by 20. Why does the district keep increasing the levy? Those 20 teachers' salaries and benefits are roughly $2 million a year. And here's my challenge to the board and administration. Remember, the board is elected by taxpayers to represent the taxpayers, not the administration. The administration is employed by the board. After giving staff 4% to 6% raises this past summer, do likewise for the taxpayers. Freeze the levy at 2021's level and give the taxpayers a 5% break on their taxes. After giving AT&amp;T a contract that caps their annual increases at 3%, justify to the taxpayers why you want to take 6% from them just two months later. Like the taxpayers of the community, figure out how to accomplish more with less. I'm sure there are those in the audience who can help if asked. For those in the district who feel the district needs additional taxes, figure out a way to contact them to contribute more to the school going forward. On this last challenge, I will volunteer to help the district with this endeavor, helping to locate the people and create a system whereby those in the community can sign up to contribute more than their tax bill on an ongoing basis. Maybe start with those who post positive on the Facebook levy videos, like Tracy Bratcher and Doug Mark. Like they say, "From each according to his ability, to each according to his needs." These people need to step up as well. Thank you.
Next, we have a Mr. Terry Sanford.
Hello. Hi, my name's Terry Sanford. I'll try to keep this brief, because I know you guys have a lot of work to do tonight. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to speak tonight and express my appreciation and happiness with all they do for Lockport High School. I'm a father of a recent graduate, I'm also a current junior and incoming freshman next year. Both my children who have been through this school have been involved in athletics, fine arts department, including many clubs. These programs in the school have been an integral part of their development. My recent graduate was accepted at every college that she applied for with scholarships. I'm proud that my children have and will be attending Lockport High School and appreciate all the opportunities that are afforded to them due to programs created and supported by members of this school board. I own a business in a western suburb and speak daily with local residents. One of the employees just left her seat on a high school board, local. She's expressed many times she cannot believe the programs and opportunities that our children have and are offered here at Lockport High School. I thank you for this. I would try to take, I would like to take this opportunity to remind the board that they approved a budget in September, and the levy is what is needed to fund that budget. Not approving this levy would be fiscally irresponsible. I would also like to take this moment to say that when you start budgeting for next year, to please keep all our programs fully funded. No one wants to see cuts to anything next year, especially our children. These programs and opportunities are what sets us above all other school districts. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate, I look forward to all the amazing things to come at LTHS. Thank you.
Just for the record, that Ms. Melan Johnson came in.
So I got.
Okay, she got seven.
Does she need to?
Yes. Okay. Johnson? Here. You're here?
Oh.
Yes.
We just had to, you know, let the record reflect that you're in.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have a Ms. Debbie Alvarado.
Hi. Good evening, Dr. McBride, members of the board and administration, and community members. My name is Debbie Alvarado, and I've been a parent of an LTH student for the past nine years. I have a student who's a current junior, another who's in the adult transition program at CCC, and a 2018 graduate who, in part because of one of her, Lockport Township High School teachers, is now an educator herself. 90% of my time as a porter parent is behind me. I have just over a year left, and I've never spoken at a board meeting before. I've never felt the need. However, over the last few years, I've seen many come here to voice their concerns and their criticisms. I wanted to come here today not to offer criticism, but to say thank you. The last few years have been challenging for all of us. I remember sitting through those first virtual meetings where you, Dr. McBride, answered question after question and addressed one concerned voice after another, always calm and always with respect. I remember leaving you a message after one of those meetings and receiving a response from you within the hour. For a worried parent during a pandemic, this brought a great deal of comfort, so for that, I thank you. Since those first meetings, you continue to be present, you continue to engage and encourage engagement, you continue to be student-focused, you continue to make this community a priority, attending not just championship football games, but Special Olympics events, school musicals, and madrigal dinners, hosting community coffee meetups in order to connect with parents and other community members. And I want people to know that this level of commitment doesn't happen everywhere. Not every district, especially one as large as ours, has a superintendent who is as invested in their students and their school as Lockport Township High School does. Lockport Township High School gives back to its community, raising money for various types of cancers, sponsoring parent education sessions about suicide awareness, Share Fest events, which helped prevent, provide food for about 3,000 people, the Veterans Night celebrations, and these examples just happened within the last month. Our CCC students help the community as well while gaining work experience at Marion Village, White Oak Library, Legacy Ranch, just to name a few, and L-Town Grounds, not just a coffee shop, which, for those who don't know, is not funded through taxpayer dollars but through a grant, gives our CCC students an opportunity to gain work experience in the safety and comfort of their own school building. Porters are doing amazing things everywhere we look. Lockport Township High School teaches more than math and science. It teaches students to make this community a better place. There are people that will always find something to complain about. If it's not about masks or vaccines, it's about SEL or curriculum or a tax levy. The tax dollars that we pay are being put back into our students and back into our community. Our school could not support the programs that we are so fortunate to have without this funding. Our students can access after-school tutoring at no cost to them. Extracurricular activities are accessible to all students. Fees are not a barrier for students to participate. IHSA competitions are costly, and all students that are eligible are able to attend regardless of cost. These dollars allow Lockport Township High School students to invest, Lockport Township High School to invest in their faculty and their students. We, as taxpayers, are getting a return on our investment. Without our tax dollars, our students are the ones who will lose. The voices of your critics are loud. They have to be because they're in the minority. They say that they speak for the community. I want you to know that they don't speak for me, nor do they speak for the parents that I know, and I assure you that I know many. I have been a porter parent for nearly a decade. I want you to know that we, parents, see and appreciate all that this school offers to our students. As I near my time as a parent of a Lockport Township High School student, one might think that I would have less of an investment. Soon I won't have a student at this school, but I see the value in all that you do and in all that you provide, not only for the students of these buildings, but for the community that surrounds them. Have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Next, we have a Ms. Missy Chandhara.
Good evening, school board members, and thank you for being here. Thank you, Dr. McBride and Ms. Kroy, for meeting with me on Thursday morning and going over the budget and the levy with me. School board members, thank you. You're elected officials that are not paid. You do volunteer work. It's one of the few elected officials, if any, that are actually not paid for the work that you do. I stand here before you as a resident since 2003 of Lockport. I have five children, and I've spoken in front of you before. My oldest daughter is a class of 2020. If she used one word to describe herself, she would say resilient. She had opportunities here like National Honor Society, best buddies, many sports activities, swim and water polo. many sports activities, swim and water polo. She was able to take many courses, which now will allow her to graduate a semester early from college. I'm grateful because that has saved me thousands of dollars for the opportunity provided at Lockport. My next daughter was a class of 2022. She also had the opportunity to participate in many activities, Best Buddies, Special Olympics, golf, and water polo. I'm proud to say she is doing amazing at ISU and she is going to go in the Communication Speech Disorder Program because of the ability to work with the Best Buddies Program here and the Special Olympics. And she greatly appreciates that. My next son is my son and he holds the key to all of our hearts. He's a class of 2024, but as I learned on Thursday, he actually will not be considered a graduate according to the state's standards because he will be continuing on to the CCC program and they do not identify those students as graduates. I thank you for all that you've done for him and his fellow peers. I thank you for the coffee shop that you thought outside of the box and that you were able to build that with the renovation. I thank you for working with the Department of Real Estate for funding the equipment and the staff, which allows my son the opportunity to learn skills to possibly become employable as an adult so that he will have to be less reliable of us as a community and society and hopefully can be more reliable on himself. I know that this grant relies on outcomes and one of those outcomes is to make these students employable. And again, I appreciate that, the checks and balances. My second to last is my daughter, who is a freshman at class of 2026. She had the opportunity to participate in Fresh Start, which she actually plans to volunteer again. She is taking a rigorous course schedule and is studying for finals as we speak. When I attended her curriculum night, and I emailed you, five out of seven of her teachers were LTH graduates. That to me says something about the district we live in when so many of our students, our teachers come back to teach. She's also involved in Best Buddies. And finally, I have my class of 2032 daughter that will make it here eventually and I look forward to the opportunities that she will have. I know that in 2021, 70% of our students from the class of 2021, after 12 months, were still attending a two- to four-year college. After 16 months, they were, 70% were attending a two- to four-year college. And that is taken from the National Clearing House. That says a lot about our school when that many students are still attending colleges. I know that our graduation rate is 93%. And it is unfortunate. This number reflects the 49 students from 2022 who will continue on to the CCC program and other programs and the state does not consider these students as graduates. Had they been identified as graduates, that 93% rate would be higher. That is not something any of us can change unless we want to go down there and do it ourselves. I know that out of 16 neighboring high schools, LTHS has had the lowest tax rate and I appreciate that. And I was able to find that on page 21 of the fiscal year '23 budget. I know that ISB has financial indicators and that we are at a four, one of the highest standards. I know that people look at that when they go to move in our communities. I know that they recommend six to 12 months of reserves for repairs, for late payments from the state. I know that the board itself has a policy also related to that. I know that if LTHS does under levy, there is possibly three options that could happen, which would be debt, deferred maintenance, which in the long run, I would assume could cost us more money, and a referendum. If LTHS does choose to under levy, this could also lead to larger class sizes. In '21, '22, LTHS was 21.9 students per class and the state was 20.9. It could lead to reductions of clubs and activities, which we've heard from so many other people, are very successful and make our students well-rounded and capable to do great many things. It can really lead to course selection, reductions of course selections available to our students, including technical careers, fax, and arts. Or maybe the resource officer at $286,000 would be one of those items on the cut. Many people look at our schools prior to purchasing. If any of the above scenarios were to happen, our homes and community may become a less desirable area to live in. And in return, the money we may save on an under levy may lead to decreased home value. We have three ways to pay for taxes in Illinois: sales, income, and property. We need to decide where we want to do it. And if we want to change that, then we need to go advocate downstate. But at this time, property taxes is how we pay for our schools. I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Next we have a Ms. Teresa Hayes.
Hello, my name is Teresa Hayes. I've been here before. I've spoken before. I think that most people know who I am. I'm here today to talk about the tax levy as I have in the past. And I would like to add to that. I have lived in the district of 205 since 2002. I've had four children come through this school district as well as the lower school district. So I've been paying taxes and funding this school for quite some time. When someone comes up here and asks the school board to not vote on an additional tax levy, we are not saying that us 205 district taxpayers are going to stop paying our taxes. You're not going to get any money. Like someone already said, you've budgeted a certain amount. Just like at home, if you budget and you go over budget, you have to figure out how you're going to make it work. That being said, I would like to tell you a little bit about an article I read regarding the Northern Illinois Food Pantry, which partners with more than 900 food pantries, soup kitchens, and shelters across northern Illinois. It has seen a 50% increase in its residents using food pantries compared to pre-COVID times. This article was written in October. In the Chicago area, they said they had 305,000 residents visiting per month. It is now 430,000 residents per month visiting a food pantry. Why are they visiting a food pantry? I'm sure that we all can figure it out. Their budget isn't going as far. Their utilities is up. Their gas is up. Their regular expenditures are more than they have been in the past. So the easiest thing to do is to go to a food pantry. Now, if we are going to take Americans at this time in our history, we have to understand, we're in a certain time in our history. This is a super-high economy that we're paying for. We can, you can, take steps to cut costs in the sense of not raising their costs. What do you think happens to these people who need to go to food pantries? Citizens, our neighbors, who are going to food pantries without telling everybody because they can't make their costs? We're going to raise their taxes? I think that we all can hope and pray that the cost of bread and milk and lettuce is going to come down. But you push through this tax levy, when will our taxes go back down? When will our property taxes see a decrease? I don't think that we have an answer for that right now. So as someone else had already said, if you stick to the decade 3% increase, you will help out your 205 district taxpayers, not just the ones that have had a kid coming through here for a decade like many of us have. I've had a graduate since 2016. Every couple of years, I've had a graduate. We all want the programs to continue. We want the school to flourish. But we need to be fiscally responsible, just like we have to be at home. If you cannot keep yourself within your budget or be creative with your budget and be smart with the money, how many families do you know could go an entire year without getting one more paycheck? Could pay every bill, every utility, every mortgage payment for even six months? Do you know any? Do you know any small business owner that could pay its rent, could pay its employees, its unemployment insurance, its health insurance for its employees for even six months without collecting revenue? If you live in the same world that I live in, you don't know anybody. I don't know anybody. Nobody here knows anybody who could live that long without getting any money to come in. If the district has money in reserve and/or in a bank account and they can use that money while they figure out how to be more fiscally responsible, the school board members have been voted in by the taxpayers, people with children and people without. This district is full of people who don't have children in the district. They still pay taxes and they're still important. They're important citizens just like everybody else. So seriously, consider your vote on this tax levy. As someone else said, in April, some of you are coming up for reelection. Thank you.
Ms. Laura Gilobli.
Hello, I'm Laura Gilobli. I am for the tax levy. I understand concerns. I don't have a lot of statistics to share, but I am going to speak from the heart. I am a member of the community, a longtime member of the community. I'm a Lockport High School graduate myself. My husband was a graduate. My daughter just graduated in 2022. And she also found her passion in life by participating in programs. And my concern if this levy doesn't pass is that programs would be cut and programs benefit not only our children, but our entire community. I'm also a counselor in a nearby large school district. So I see firsthand how programs benefit students. You know, the most important thing is mental health right now and I think we are in a mental health crisis. A lot of our students are really struggling and suffering and having programs and activities is very important for those social connections, not only with their peers, but also with adults in their school buildings. So we can Google the research, right? We know what programs help, but I'm going to tell you anyway. Programs involved students tend to be more academically successful, not only in the classroom, but in testing. We see, you know, my students who are involved in things, their attendance is better. We see improved behavior. Again, citing those social connections with peers, with teachers. I'm not going to take up too much more of your time. Thank you for all that you do for the community. I think a lot of my, you know, my peers over here have said what I would like to say. But, you know, this tax levy is going to, it's for the benefit of our school and for our programs. I think it's obvious how it helps. I'm a very proud member, a citizen of the city, and I think it's very obvious how it helps our community, our city. Busy kids are productive kids. And so let's pass this tax levy. I hope that you will. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Jay Voting.
Board Superintendent McBride, parents, taxpayers. I'll start off by saying Merry Christmas to everyone and a beloved Happy New Year. I want to piggyback a little bit off of what Jeff had said about the tax levy. 6.04%. A lot of people don't think it's a lot and you look at the graph compared to other schools. You know, you can look at that. We can also compare educational values and stuff like that. But I am the parent of a current Lockport porter. I am also the parent of two graduates. One who's sitting in the audience with us, just graduated from Purdue University and has done great. I've got another one at North Central College, who not only bowled on the women's bowling team here, but also bowls for college, for North Central Women's Bowling. My kids have done great, okay? I want to talk a little bit like what Tammy had said earlier. No one's saying to defund the school. But to offer a little light to, you know, some people that may think that you're not going to have the money or that some of the programs are going to fall short if you don't get this tax levy. Through your last report and at the last meeting, you guys had budgeted $39 million for the educational budget. As of November 30th, in your educational fund, the general fund, you had $5 million. But in the investment fund, you had $45 million. Now, think of that, that half of your fiscal year is already up and you've still got $50 million in the educational fund with roughly $19,200 to pay out into it. So the money's there and the funds are there. So I don't see education slipping if you don't pass the fund. Even if you resort back and you go with the same taxation that you did in '22, opposed to going, you know, moving forward into '23 with this $3.6 million, you're still getting funds in. You get your money dumps in, I think, June and then in September. So with that being said, well, I think parents and people and taxpayers that are on fixed incomes especially, okay, are saying, let's not dig in our pockets any deeper. Let's bring that percentage down to something more respectful, something a little bit more in line, okay, with what people see on the increases of their salaries and their incomes. One and a half to 3% max, max 3%. That's what people see. And again, even if you lower that tax levy, the programs are still not going to suffer because the money's still there. Because at the end of the day, between all your fund accounts, we're running at about, I think, $74 million. Now, I know there's aspirations to build another school, so that's why we're building up that coffer. I get that. I understand where you're going with it. But we are in, we are in times of high interest. This would be a solid. In fact, you guys would look like rock stars to the taxpayers. Because what would happen is if you didn't increase the levy, essentially, we have new homes now in the district. Now that same levy would get spread out by more homes. Taxes could actually go down for this year while we're seeing record-breaking inflation and give everyone a little bit of a [whispering]. Because when the tax levies go up, Township Village, Homer Township and Homer Village, I mean, the Village of Homer Glen lowered their taxes. But when it comes to the school districts, and you guys are 6.04%. I think 92 is at roughly 6%. 33C, they did, what was it, Missy, like 7.55, I think you guys raised it. We have to kind of tighten our belts to show the effort that we can do this, okay? I think it would help everybody else out. Now, there may be people that say, you know what? 3% isn't enough. I think I deserve, I make money, I want to pay more to the schools. Simple question, instead of, I don't want to say mandate because we've learned to share mandates aren't laws. But I want to say, instead of forcing people to pay with a tax levy, why don't we bring that percentage down? That way, all the taxpayers will still pay. But those that have the means, we could do like a GoFundMe account. And I'm sure you guys want to turn it down and it could be for additional tax levy amounts for the 2023 school year. And those that feel that they can give more, let them give more, but at least we're not forcing them. Just a few ideas. Think about it. Merry Christmas and God bless.
Mr. Joe Adolf.
Good evening, everybody. First hats off to the board, volunteer board. You guys put up with a lot, I know firsthand. And thanks for all the things that you all do. Takes a lot of stamina for you to consume all the information you need to consume in order to help run a wonderful and efficient school district. You know, it's interesting when you compare a school district to businesses and you hear folks compare having a fund balance and wanting to spend it all the way down. Well, no business ever spends down their fund balance to zero. Those dollars are in constant use and they're constantly being used in a forecast to spend over time. I don't run my checking account down to zero and I would never expect the school district to do it. So keep it up. You're doing the right thing. It makes perfect sense. And I know that most of the costs that you deal with are not within your control. Yes, sure, of course, you can negotiate contracts. But right now, I know I see costs going up around the US, anywhere between 10% to 25%. So to hear that you got an AT&amp;T contract, I think one of the other people said it went up by 3%, that's amazing. I'm sure that's because you negotiated or used leverage power buy because of the size of the school district. So, excuse me. So well done. So I'm in support of the levy. I'll tell you why. First of all, I think you put together a wonderful budget and I know that levy is going to support it exactly the right way. Based on my calculations, my taxes may go up 90 bucks, maybe 120 bucks a year, rough numbers. Or, yeah. And I can tell you that- And I can tell you that since living here in, in 2003, maybe I've spent all in, we'll call it $30,000 on this school district. I've got two porters in school, like many of the people have talked about here. This is the single greatest investment I've made with any of the money I've spent, because both of them have been accepted to highly selective universities under presidential scholarships. And over the lifetime of their undergraduate tuition, it's going to save me $144,000. Put in 30 grand, slowly over time, get $144,000 out all day long. I'll do it again. I'm happy to live here for another 18, 19 years and double down so that other students can enjoy the same type of opportunity. Another thing on having an excellent school, an excellent school attracts home buyers. And when you're in a market that attracts home buyers, it drives up home values. And I hate to say it to everybody who lives in this district, your home values are going up. And because those home values go up over time, your taxes, the amount of dollars that you spend in taxes over time will also go up. So unless you'd like to see your, your home values go down, which I don't think you want that, you're just going to continue to pay more taxes over time. There's true things that are guaranteed in this life, as they say. And I also applaud Homer 33C for passing their 7% levy in November. Couldn't be happier to see that continued investment in the young kids in this community. Thanks very much.
Hello, board. Let me just start off by saying that I am for the levy. And I hope you keep it up because you are making my job so easy. So let me explain. I'm with a group of people who have people in every voting precinct in Homer Glen. That's 22 precincts with about 500 voters per precinct, okay? My precinct alone is, has went from right over about 300 to about right over 400 in the last year, okay? So when I say my precinct and voters, let me be clear, I don't tell people how to vote, okay? My job is to sell the idea that your taxes are too high, okay? And you're making my job so much easier and I thank you for that. Right now, I can only speak for my precinct. If I had, if we had a referendum tomorrow on school choice, my precinct would pass it, no problem, okay? And that's a gift that you, you've given me, okay, just in the last couple of years with the unscientific mask mandates, the vaccinations, and now the, the pre-cardiograms for myocarditis or whatever is going on with that. The voters work on the idea of Occam's razor, okay? So you might deny that the free EKGs have anything to do with vaccine injuries or whatever, but whatever the simplest explanation is, that's what the voters are going to go for. Right now, today, tonight, you're going to give me the best Christmas present ever. You're going to hand wrap it and gift it and drop it off right on my doorstep when you raise these taxes, okay? All I have to do is explain to my voters, this is what's happening. And when they open up their gift, when the tax bill comes, they're going to understand what's going on. Now, the reason I bring this up is the idea of a high school in Homer Glen, it's been going on for like 20 years. And, you know, it's been bandied about and this and that. But I think this gift that you're giving us tonight will maybe push that over the edge, okay? And from what I understand, I mean, I don't know what the percentage of your funding comes from Homer Glen, 50, 60%, maybe lower, maybe higher. I don't know. But the, the idea is you might not care about this because it's, it might take a couple of years for this to happen. But this right now is the catalyst that'll make it happen, okay? And you'll all be fine. You know, you'll go on to private sector and do whatever you're going to do. The only thing that's suffering, the only people that are suffering are the kids, okay, and the taxpayers during a recession and, and completely out of control prices at the grocery stores and stuff like that. I mean, it's just not a good idea. What, what I'm trying to say is the fear mongering has gone on in every single school district. I've raised two kids in the Oak Lawn systems for 10 years by myself, and I heard the same thing, okay? If we don't raise the taxes, we're going to have to cut programs, right? And everybody's running around going, oh my God, they're going to cut programs, they're going to cut programs. Okay, it's only, it's just fear mongering and I wish you guys would stop doing that. I've seen some of the flyers that went out. But like I said, you're all going to be fine. The kids are going to suffer. The ACT scores are still lower than, you know, than the surrounding districts. I mean, I don't know what the return on investment is with our kids, but it seems like it's not in the, you know, millions and millions of dollars range that you guys are, are telling us that it is. I mean, the teachers and the administrators are at 38% higher than national average, okay? Our taxes, our, 75% of our taxes go to the school districts, okay? Our taxes in Homer Glen are four points higher than the national average.
Sir, your time is up.
What's that?
Your time is up.
Oh, thank you. I'm done. Merry Christmas.
I'm mostly addressing the school board, not the administration, but the school board. Now, I've been on a lot of boards in my life and I look at you guys and I don't get it. You don't care about people on fixed incomes, your grandma, your grandma's friends. They're not going to be able to afford these taxes. Your tax plus the grade school tax, plus the college tax, just the school, 75%. If they all go up 6% on average, that's a big knuckle to, it's bad. Schools, that's the public sector, you don't have to worry about nothing. You're like in la la land over here. Everybody in the public sector gets raises every year. They get 5%, maybe for three, four, five years. Everybody gets a raise. Some people get step raises. You guys, when you retire, you get your last two years to boost up your pension so you make more money on everybody. So that's why I say this la land. In the real world, that never happens. It does never happen. You're lucky to even get a raise right now in the real world. So when you say you're only raising your tax a little bit and you need it for this, well, you really have to look at what's going to happen. How many seniors are you going to stick in their butt with this tax increase? Think about it. Where are they going to get the money to pay for this stuff? And I know you guys care, but I have a problem with the process now, too. I was at the last meeting and everything gets thrown out and it appears like you guys just go in line with whatever you're told by the administration. So the guy that does your budgets for the administration says you need this much money, you guys go like sheeps, go, yes, yes, give it to them. I heard no discussion about the cost, zero. That means that either one or two things is happening. You guys just are sheep and say whatever the administrators say, they're smarter than me, so I'm not going to contest them. Or you're breaking the Open Meetings Act and having meetings on the workshop on, or whatever, without telling people about the budgets and levies, because that's not a reason to go into executive session. Or you're getting phone calls individually, which is legal. But somewhere along the line, something's wrong when you don't even have a conversation between the board members. When, at the county, when they tried to raise the levy to 5%, we argued and we argued for about 45 minutes on the board. Everyone had a different opinion. And we end up reducing it from 5% to 2.5%. And as far as I'm concerned, that was too much because a 2.5% increase is too much for these seniors right now. They're in big trouble. Just think about it. If you don't have any money, what do you got to do? You got to use a credit card. What's the interest rate on a credit card? That's your mom's friends. And you, you guys are sitting up here and you're willing to raise the taxes and hurt all the seniors and not even say anything about it? You just listen to the public come and give input and nobody says anything? That's a shameful thing to do because I think you're all smart people. Now, when, with the township, we cut our taxes the first year, the first six months I went in office, we cut it by $267,000. The levy was 1.267. And I cut the 267 out of there. So now our levy's a million bucks. My first six months I did that. This year, we froze it. We didn't raise nothing. The Village of Homer Glen, they voted not to increase their levy and they've got a bunch of stuff. But you guys better wake up because you're hurting every senior here and you're hurting the entire district with your votes to increase taxes like this.
Next, we have Ms. Dick Lee, it's Ms. Jennifer Pencilino.
I'd first like to start off with addressing a lot of the comments that I heard tonight and apparently the fear mongering that there's flyers going around regarding cutting back on services and programs. I've never heard one person speak at these meetings to that effect, so that's not true. I spoke to you a few weeks ago, along with several other elected officials from our local community. Since your last board meeting, my board, the Village Board of Homer Glen, voted not to increase a tax levy for a second year in a row now. Guess what? So did Homer Township. They've cut their taxes for the past two years. The world did not fall apart. Neither did the township or the Village of Homer Glen. Mr. McBride, you stated to me that freezing or lowering the levy would ultimately lead to deficit spending, hardly proper fiscal management. You have given me and the taxpaying, taxpaying residents of this community, zero evidence to support making this kind of statement. It's false. If your local government municipalities are doing it and services are not suffering, this proves proper fiscal management can be done with not increasing the levy. I've stated you this time and time again, if we can do it, so can you. I recently addressed you about one of your staff members addressing the Homer Township Board and stating that the elected officials are misrepresenting the facts by speaking for their constituents who have asked us to speak on their behalf. Your staff member claimed, we don't speak for, and we don't. But your paid staff is accountable to we, the people, when we, the residents, are paying their salaries and yours and their spending and yours of our property tax dollars. Why do we speak for others? Because they do not want to be bullied or doxxed? Who would? Everyone elected to this board is supposed to be here to represent the people who voted them out, voted them onto the board and the children in the school district. You are not here to represent a political agenda, a personal agenda, or to continue to increase your budget or your spending, your frivolous spending, and increase our property tax dollars every single year. That's irresponsible. It's actually negligent. You are all accountable for your choices and your voting record on this board. I am very confident that the April 4th election will bring with it a reckoning that this board clearly is not prepared for. I speak to a lot of residents, I have to. Residents who are not paid, who are not paid faculty with your school district, they're not happy, they're tired of receiving less education for an increased cost in their property taxes. They can't afford your shopping spree anymore. Your cutbacks in services for our children, your closures, and spending on your politics and your priorities has had a negative impact on all of this community. You have increased spending repeatedly on management, maintenance, and line items that are actually inconsequential to academics, all while your line items associated with actual teaching and education have decreased. Not going to beg for you to do the right thing because I know that you're not. Your leadership with the school district demonstrates a very brazen pattern of spend, spend, spend. You refuse to do your job and budget properly. You've stockpiled millions of our taxpayer dollars, which I'm sure this board is completely oblivious to. A number of us believe that you are probably creating this little nest egg to build another school, but you're not being transparent about it. Mr. McBride, you expect me and the other residents complaining about your reckless spending to be appreciative of the fact that you could have raised this tax levy anywhere from 8 to 10% so that your 6.04% is a blessing? It's not. It's an insult. It's an insult because you won't even entertain the idea of not increasing the levy at all. Thank you, but no thank you. Let me point out some cold, hard facts for you. There are actual residents right now in our community that have to go to the Lockport Food Pantry to feed their families. People cannot afford to spend the same amount for groceries anymore, so they buy less food. People can't afford gas for their vehicles. They can't afford to heat their home right now, today. People can't afford their mortgages on their homes, their property taxes, that you all personally continue to squeeze out of them. At some point, people have to stand up and fight tyranny when it's crushing them. This board and all the school board districts are taxing us to death. You're voting to increase your levy 6.04%. Homer 33C just voted to increase, there's 7.55%. And D 92 just voted to increase, there's 6%. Merry Christmas, Homer and Lockport Township.
With public comments, so there will be no, there being no additional comments up here, if I close this meeting at 8:01. Okay, we have no student government for this month of November. Next, we have our AFT report, Ms. Katie Kishler.
Good evening. On behalf of our membership, I just want to thank you all for a wonderful semester. It was great and refreshing to have, I guess, to say back to normal. We reinstated the last item that we hadn't had since the pre-pandemic, which was our Porter Pride Breakfast, which is always a great event. So it's, it's been a long semester, but a great one. Special thanks to our office professionals and administration who put in the time and effort to make us feel very special this past week. We appreciate it. To our maintenance and grounds, I want you to know how much we value you, especially with the winter season and storm season coming. You are very important and we notice you every day. So on behalf of our teachers, staff, everybody, thank you, Merry Christmas, and we're ready for a break. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the IASV report, Ms. Maran Johnson.
Do you have anything? Do you have anything?
There's nothing coming up.
Okay, all right. Okay, and then I need to note that at your table, I did leave my summary report, you know, as far as from the triple I conference. I'll just go briefly by it. You know, you guys already went through the trust edge, but my fellow board member, Michael Lewandowski, and I, we attended that Friday workshop that was very enlightening, very, it was really good. We went through the eight pillars. I'm sure all of you know the eight pillars of, you know, of those, of trust and... And we did, you know, did roundtable discussions, activities based on that. I highly recommend, even the students, someone had, did mention that we should do that Trust Shield, one where, you know, the, where they list all their strengths, their backgrounds. I had the most hard part about the legacy, you know, on that part. That was like, it was a component, if you remember, where it said, let's see, it was, I believe it was, if there was one thing you would want people to remember you or talk about you, what would it be if you left the seat today? So that was a little hard work for me to put down. So on Saturday, I did do Amplifying Student Voice with the seat at the board table. I briefly did talk about, a little bit about this. It was the student ambassador having it here. And I do, I am highly interested in attending the Oswego High School and see how that interaction with the board and with the student ambassador goes before, you know, before I bring it up again, you know, or have further discussion on that. Okay, the other one was, let's see, recruiting and retaining school board candidates. As you can see, yes, we have three, three seats that are coming up and there are, from what I understand, there are several running. So there's also, let's see, the other workshop that I went to, there's Power in Numbers, Helping Peers with Mental Health. I was very, after hearing this presentation, it seems that Lockport is doing great above and beyond what this other school district was doing because they're just trying to implement these programs on mental health and we're just like way over, way over the top on that. So I was very, overall, the triple I conference, it was very educational for me, great networking. And again, several years ago, no one knew where Lockport was. Like I said, I attended the triple I beforehand, being not in this school district, but in another school district, and no one really knew where Lockport was. And I can definitely say now it's on the map. So they're doing great things and it's not, you know, and it was amazing sitting there with the board presidents, you know, when we talked about it was they, they look to you, Dr. McBride, they look to us, and they're like figuring what is Lockport doing that we can copy off of them? So that is it. What about you, Mr. Travis? Anything to add to that or no?
Yeah, I attended a couple myself. I really enjoyed the onboarding board members success. It had some key notes in there on how we can better welcoming new board members, making sure that they have everything they need to get started right away. They also talked about the process on, in placing for new board members that enable them to become adequate with their team. Also a trust thing, you know, building the board's trust in one another and was a good thing. It's also touched bases on, like Dr. McBride did with us before our first meet, board meeting, meeting with us, one-on-one, following up with us, and then answering any questions that we had. So I thought that was good. And some tips they had talked about was honoring and having, committing yourself to the board. More sure, making sure board members don't over-commit themselves. Instead, they should focus on learning about the board and working, you know, together, best was best. So I enjoyed that one mostly. So there's a lot of information on that.
Mr. Navarro?
About what we learned at the conference.
Triple I, yes.
So there was one that I learned, there was a guest speaker who was talking about her school board in Alaska. And what happens is in one, in one of their monthly meetings, they only have two things in one, or they have two monthly meetings. One of the things that they do in the other monthly meeting is they just have a call to order and they just have a direct conversations with people in the audience, whoever shows up. Now granted, they are, they only have like thirty-ish people who go to them, you know, like it's a lot smaller than us. But I think it would be really nice if we could have like, you know, as, as a board, also being able to just speak, like have an opportunity to have a discussion, not just with us, ourselves, but other members of the community. I think like we are, and we did talk about that with the self-evaluation. But really, I'd say like one of the biggest things, because I was asking and I was talking to a lot of people at the triple I conference, and for a lot of it is like, how do you guys have like an open discussion with like your board and, or like with, with like key community members? And one of the things that I really picked up was a lot of them also do tend to target some of like their feeder schools or their feeder, sorry, their feeder school. So they, some of them only really have one feeder school. I noticed like towards the set, like as you go down, there's really only one feeder school. And like that, that really like put into perspective for me where it's like, wow, I don't really know, like who are, like who the board members of the feeder schools are. And I don't think, I, I, I know some of the superintendents, but I'm not quite sure about, I can't name like one board member on every of the feeder schools. So it, it, it really just like talking to, for, for me, it was just really just speaking to like what the other board members were and gaining their perspective. It's really interesting to hear from like the, the difference that like the, even like the northern, the, the northerner part of Illinois has from us and how they can, like how they conduct their meetings and how they reach out to people. And there, and there were some people who said that they don't, like the inner cities tend to not. So it's, it's really just, it, it really, it, it really goes to show you like how just different everything is even from people who are just like twenty miles away from us. That's really it. Sorry.
I went to a lot of really great presentations. I went to One End Women in Leadership where a lot of female superintendents came in and just talked about their stories and what that's like for them. I went to a half-day presentation on school finance, talked a lot about what districts are currently doing as far as their tax levies, which I'll probably bring up more later when we talk about our tax levy. And just, you know, just learning how, where that funding comes from and just how exactly that, that is built. Went to another one on superintendent evaluations where they presented on an evaluation tool that I found very intriguing, that I think is more user-friendly for board members. So that might be something that we talk about later. And then Dr. McBride's presentation, which was fantastic, just about having effective board meetings. And then also one on school safety. And it was just eye-opening to see the number of people that were actually in that presentation and just the concerns that community members have, concerns that I don't think that we have here. So it made me feel really good about the things that we're doing in regards to school safety and making sure our students are learning in that kind of environment.
Thank you, thank you. And in the absence of Mr. Dick, I note that Kathy sent us, or has right here in your, in your table, he has his summary too, so. All right. And then, and I know that in speaking with him, he did say that if, after reading his report there, that if you had any concerns or questions, you can call him directly.
Okay. Ms. Maran Johnson?
Of course, I went to the delegate assembly. That was interesting. The key thing out of the delegate assembly was that, I guess I didn't realize it, is that the officers were only elected for one year. They just modified that, that they're there for two years now. So that way you could have an easier, a smoother working condition with that. So I thought that was a good thing. Then I went to a workshop called, what is it? Partnership is the New Leadership. And I realized that Dr. McBride was in it, was in the same class, so. And some of the key points where people support what they help create, that is a valid comment because I noticed in a lot of things that I work with, if people have buy-in to the things that they create, they're more likely to go along with you. When you don't give them input, you know, there's a lot of resistance, which goes to the next point they had was communication, was care versus candor, okay? So you can over-communicate sometimes, you know? They say you have to be careful not to over-communicate what's going on and you want to make sure that people get to give their input when you're communicating. So, excuse me. So that was the key point there. And also communication, again, is about balance. You know, you have to balance how you communicate and how you tell the message, you know? So, and partnerships are an important thing, you know? That's, that's what makes us successful, you know? Like we have partnerships with the Rotary, we have partnerships with the Chamber of Conference and other organizations. You know, we have to get the message out, we have to get their buy-in, you know? We have community committees that come in and, you know, give us input and feedback. So that's all about being a good leader, so. So that was the one training I went to. Oh, I went to Equity Immersion. It was an interesting new training that they had where the key subject, which I had been seeing a lot about, was discussion about SROs, which is student resource officers. And so they had like table topics. And it was, you know, it was interesting, a lot of people were against having SROs in the school. You know, ours are not per se in the school. Well, a lot of school districts, they are physically in the school. So that's when you see a lot of things on the news where there's conflict, you know, and, you know, you see them, you know, body slamming some student or whatever. So the gentleman who was facilitating that conversation said that, you know, if you're going to have them in the school, you need to make sure that they're properly trained, you know, and they need to understand the school's rules and regulations, so. And then they had, excuse me, a panel discussion was, which was about equity. And on there was students. And one thing one of the students said, which was a good point, is that a lot of people look at equity as giving someone else a hand up. Equity is basically, he says, as a student, giving him what he needs so he can succeed, you know? So making everything equitable. So that was a good discussion because it was from a student perspective versus an adult perspective, so.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Foundation report, Ms. Maran.
Good evening, everybody. Mine is nice and short for December. I just wanted to touch base on our Santa event. Mr. Navarro was there, so he got to witness firsthand at the fun that we got to have with Santa Claus, with our staff. We're very fortunate that Mike Petty, who's a former board member, has been super supportive of that event and, and helps. He seems to know the big man and brings him with him as he comes to visit. Over three hundred people came to our event. It was really nice just to see the staff together and festive in a whole new environment. We're back, we were back to doing all the fun things that we get to do with Santa. The, we, the board met in the first of the month. We, they committed to their calendar for the next year. We are looking for the opportunity to host one more community event, not like the Taste of Lockport, but another event for the community, similar in, in feel, but not in deed. And then just wanted to share my excitement about the momentum the foundation has seen in the community and on the, the great work that they get to do as we move forward into 2023. I'm excited to see what happens. Any questions that I can answer? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative report, Dr. McBride.
All right. Springfield is in the veto session, the lame duck session, I think this week, probably the holiday session. But there are a couple of just things to make you aware of. There are a number of different organizations that represent public schools that are looking at something called the Invest in Kids Act. And to make it brief, in 2017, the state of Illinois reformulated how it provides its funding. And it shifted to something called evidence-based funding. I don't know how my learned colleague here, Stephanie Kroy, feels about it, but I think in my career, it's been the best effort that the state has made to get it right, even though the state, you know, shares in evidence-based funding that we're ten million dollars underfunded. I, I would argue still evidence-based funding is, is a strong proposal. But inside of that, when that got passed, was something called the Invest in Kids Act, which was a voucher program to use public funds for private schools. And so a number of forces in Springfield that was set to be around for five years, we are at five years now. So you'll see a debate in, in Springfield about whether to sunset that as proposed or to continue with the Invest in Schools Act. Another really interesting thing that's going on, Mrs. Chandra Rana mentioned how our state counts students who are eighteen to twenty-three and are required and have the opportunity to come back for vocational and life training. It's a little bit of a mystery that they don't count as graduates and hurt our graduation rate. But another mystery out there that several organizations are asking is, we use the SAT for our accountability testing, one of the most difficult tests. We always end up in the top ten of strength and difficulty of tax tests for accountability, federal accountability testing, you know, in, in the fifty-state union. Interestingly enough, the SAT is created by College Board. College Board has national cut scores. The state of Illinois has created its own more difficult cut scores. So many of our students who do not meet under the national standards would meet. Many who meet would exceed. The state of Illinois uses its own, what they describe, more rigorous cut scores. So a question that many people are asking this here is, why if we're using a national test, why aren't we using those national norms to compare Illinois students to the nation? So those are some things going on with the Illinois School Board, especially you'll see a new state superintendent coming in with the retirement of Carmen Ayala. Some things going on in that front.
Thank you. All right.
Right, you know, public comment follow-up. At your, your board retreat that you recently had with IASB, one of the things you asked me to do is just, our practice, what you've asked us and our administrators to do is every time we have public comment, you know, all these fine folks will, will get a phone call or an email from me or an appropriate administrator. So you asked me to provide a brief synopsis, and I will try to be brief. So we had twelve citizens who spoke last month on November twenty-first. All of those citizens received an email, a call, or in some case, both. Generally, the approach I use and administrators, Dr. Christopher, Dr. Huntington, Mrs. Kroy sometimes, is we either try to have a phone conversation, even better would be a meeting face-to-face. Most of the comments last month were about the budgets, very difficult over the phone to talk about financial and where financial documents are, although we, we post them and they'll come up pretty soon. In this, you'll see all of our financial documents in our transparency page. So meet, dialogue, just kind of old-fashioned, kind of, you know, meet and have a cup of coffee and, and talk through things. Of the twelve, we had five that participated in a conversation. Had a good conversation with Mike Bonomo, talked about phone conversation. He talked about compromising. I invited him and really anybody he was representing Homer Township Board to come in. He said he would get back to me if that was possible, that, that just didn't happen. I had a good back and forth with Brett Porfilio via email, that was exclusively via email. Hoped could sit him down because he talked about some, you know, things that, that Homer Township Highway was doing. But most of the questions we went back and forth with were class size averages, some state averages in terms of administrator to student ratios, future finances, conversations like that. Mrs. Consolino, trustee Consolino, we had quite a bit of back and forth via emails that related really to all the issues that, that she outlined this evening. Then I did have two individuals, probably a model of engagement, I would say, was Bill and Jane Pasalia. They came in, they spent an hour, well, about two hours almost with Dr. Christopher and I. We spent the first half talking about a hundred pages of what I presented to you on October eighteen, really looking at all the indicators, not just standardized test scores, but what does the National Clearinghouse say about our students' college performance? How are we doing grade-wise? How are we doing on advanced placement? So really looking at all the indicators that we use to, to measure performance. Then we spent the second half talking about tax levy. I would say there were a lot of aha moments, a lot of for them, a lot of really good give and take. We talked about the very exciting property tax extension limitation law, which is a, is a very difficult law in some ways to, to, to understand. I think that was an idea. You know, what I would say to all the folks that participated, we're, we're a government that calls you back. I don't want to cut at state senators or state reps or congresspeople, but oftentimes they're, they're so busy, they have so much going on in their legislative bailiwick that they, they can't call you back. But, um, you know, we're a government that calls you back and is willing to sit down and, 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 and meet. Just a few things, I, you know, just to share with you that I think we just have to set the record straight on. We've heard a number of times today, 6% tax increase. And I just, I think for you, I think it's important to look at these tax rates. Our last tax rate was 1.921%. When there is a levy that increases of any amount, that increase in the levy is not the increase that an individual taxpayer will experience because the tax levy is distributed. For example, Citgo will pay the biggest tax bill of any taxpayer, and we're lucky to have that kind of industry and, and other businesses of anyone. They, they won't pay the same kind of payment that, that others will pay. You know, last year, we were the lowest of those 17 high school districts. You know, you're looking at the actual tax rate, which you can see for none of those districts is, is, you know, most of them in, in this area are like ours, 1.921. You've heard a lot about a surplus. We've heard even tonight about fund balances, funds and restricted funds. And my learned colleague here, Mrs. Croy can help us, you know, that's audited, you'll get your audited every year. But I think one of the things that's important for board members to, to recognize is first off, 56 million, that number that was thrown out, that, that is actually your budget for next year. And your levy, we don't possess that money. That's anticipated spending and anticipated funds via taxation. The investments, we don't have surpluses, we have investments. And what we do is the money that was spent today on whatever we paid for, oftentimes that was collected a year and a half ago. So that immediately goes into investments. So we're using the people's money well, goes into an investment. Those are secure investments, they're not wild investments, that mature monthly, and we pay bills off. They're restricted because they are intended to pay bills because what we're talking about tonight with the tax levy is future money. It's not real money that we have. So those funds are restricted. So when you look, you have restricted funds, and, and jump in, Mrs. Croy, if there's anything I'm, I'm incorrect about, you have restricted funds, there are investments that will mature, will pay bills. And then you have our fund balances, which you as a board have chosen to meet the ISBE standard of six to 12 months of cash on hand. One, you can have financial recognition, but you can also address many of the things that come up like a new roof on this building, which, which is really something I would not recommend that you defer. But by the same token, I wouldn't recommend that you do bonds for debt or do a tax rate referendum with, with citizens. There's a lot of talk, there was some tonight with new high school. One speaker proposed creating a new high school. Just kind of go on record what we've been talking about, you know, you've had an advisory board, and really you're, as a board, you're exploring the strategy of renovating central because you understand that renovation is a third of the cost of, of a new building. One of the speakers last month proposed a new building, which is the most consequential tax burden that any board can put on a community. A new high school or a new even freshman center would be between 140 to 165 million dollars, the property owned in Homer Glen. That burden, if borne by 13,000 households in Homer Glen, would be about $1,000 a year or more in taxes. If borne by the entire district, new construction, be about $400 a year for about 25 years to pay off those bonds. You are proposing right now, you're looking into renovation as a more tax-conscious strategy to handle your facility issues because of what renovation does. I did, we've had a lot of people, I tried to reach out to some of the, the public officials and they have a meeting, but just very quickly with Homer Glen and Homer Township, just learning a little bit more about that. We've heard about no tax increase, but looking at, at, at the budgets in Homer Glen, it looks like sales tax is a real revenue generator. And I can't find, to the best of my knowledge, and certainly would love to have a meeting and understand it better, any tax, sales tax holiday for anyone in Homer Glen, which as you know, is keyed to the cost of the goods that you purchase. I also, just on the documents published on your behalf, the budget that in 2023 that the village of Homer Glen approved is $16 million more than its 2022 budget. So I think we just, you know, our Homer Glen friends, I think, realize what we realize is that government costs and services cost. Heard a lot about a 20% reduction by Homer Township, did have an opportunity to look into that. And that appears, and I say appears because trying to get myself educated on your behalf with folks just didn't happen, but most of that was relinquishing Homer Township, relinquishing the majority of its roads to the village of Homer Glen. So that reduction came from a reduction in responsibility, which obviously is a school district, very difficult for us. We can't just, you know, send 1,000 of our students to, to someplace else. Talked about seniors, you know, from your demographic study, that the most important thing to seniors, you have a lot of housing stock in your entire district that is, is held by people that are 65 and above. You know, the most consequential thing is their home. You know, the research that you did to really understand the community is that resale value of their home or inherited property will be very, very important for them. Someone asked Walter, Walter Payton College Prep, why it's the number one? I guess I just want to clarify, it, for Chicago, it's a highly selective, it's an application school. You have to apply to get in, so anyone in the city of Chicago can apply. It does attract the best and brightest, controversial in CPS. We are, you know, a public school. We take everyone, whatever, whoever they are, whatever they are, reside in our district. And then finally, there was a suggestion, you know, made last month of cutting all salaries by 5%. I, I would probably say to the board, you wisely negotiated, most districts did not negotiate with staff in the pandemic. You negotiated with staff and the unions that represent those, those staff have to stick with the contracts that they locked in, which today is those, those salary increases are well below the cost of living. So negotiating, I think, was a very financially responsible thing because you could project out exactly what your salary increases would be. Any questions from board? If I left out, you know, any conversations? I think that's just a synopsis of some things from last month. And, you know, I would just say, folks at home, folks in this room, we're always going to be willing to sit down face to face with you. And any of you spoke tonight, you know, give it, give us a chance to fall short of your expectations. I think it's one of the most consequential Democratic American things is to sit down face to face with folks. And we will always be there to do that. We're government that answers your questions. So we'd appreciate, you know, at least getting an opportunity to fall short of expectations.
Are we going to have more coffee opportunity? I think the coffee that you and I attended was.
Yeah, we're going to keep going with coffee. It's, you know, but also what I'd like to do, Mr. Navarro, is find some evening times because not everybody can make that in the morning. So probably next semester, like we talked about some compass walk and talk, and then some evening times.
Yeah. I, I guess I'm just going to keep asking about like the compass walk and talks and the coffee things.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really nice to reach out and also just like reaching out to the other, uh, future school superintendent and board members.
I know you're very interested in that. Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Navarro. All right, as far as communications, there is none. Freedom of information requests, you see that you have one there. Okay.
You did not, you did not have any public comments.
No, we did not have any public comments, sorry.
Just the um.
No, no, I think we had all of them prior to the, on the public hearing, so, okay. All right. Do I have a, a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from the November 21, 2022 regular board meeting?
Some of them.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions or discussions to those minutes? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, now, and do I have a motion to approve the, the closed session meeting minutes from the November 21st, 2022 regular board meeting?
Some of them.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions or discussions to those minutes? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes from the December 5th to 2022 special board meeting? I can make that motion?
Second.
It's been motioned by Lopez Caniva, second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions or discussions to those open session meeting minutes? Hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Just saying, I wasn't here for that.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from the December 5th, 2022 special board meeting?
Some of them.
I can second that. Are there any questions or discussions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Just saying.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the December 2022 board member expenses?
Some of them.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions or discussions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, now we move on to the treasures report, but prior to having a motion, I'll have Ms. Stephanie Croy go over the report.
Sure. There, usually I just point out some new things in the report or anything in there. If you guys have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them. Obviously, the financial reports are in there as, as usual. That's what lists our fund balances, all of our investments. And then the cash flow, of course, is something I'd like to point out because you'll see that we were at a higher point and then now, from now till eight, through April, we'll see that balance mark keep going down because it's, it's paying for all the things that the taxes came in for. The other things that are new in here this time is there are. Yes. I'm sorry.
Cash flow.
Yeah, that's what I was just talking about. Do you have a question?
Are you going to bring it up and?
Oh, I don't have control over that. Okay, sorry.
I could do it, Ms. Johnson.
So, yeah, these are the, that's the cash flow report. So that, what I was talking about is that graph. Now, you see September, we collected the taxes and now we're going to see it's being spent down. The cash receipts are the blue number, that's where the taxes were, and then our total cash investments, actually, total cash investments is the blue. It's a little, blue and green is hard to differentiate there. So you'll see the balances go down.
And those are, Mrs. Croy, those, those, I think those are blue bars, you know, I struggle with that. That's the six to 12 months cash on hand and restricted funds that are invested to pay for, you know, our current bills, November, December.
Yeah, it's everything we have as of right now, right?
Right.
Correct, cash and investments. And then you'll see that it being, it being spent down because you'll see, it's like, like you said, Dr. Brad, it's hard to see the, in September, you see the green bar next to it. Probably need to change the colors on this thing so that it's easier to see. You'll see the green bar is the revenue, so in September, it's higher than the expenditures, but all the other months, it's lower because that's when the bulk tax collections came in. So, so as of right now, with no tax levy approved yet, we, we won't have a big bar like that until it's passed, then that'll be filed with the clerk and then it'll be collected in June. So. The other thing that's different, a couple of the things that are different in this month's treasures report is we do make our bond payments. The district has two bond issues outstanding and we make our bond payments twice a, a year. The July, January 1st bond payments were, are, were paid or going to be paid here in the very end of December. So you see the, um, um, one of the items in here, Dr. Brad does not have it up, but one of the items in here is just a, um, a schedule that says, here's how much we're paying. The bond payment item is just a list of amalgamated bank, here's how much we pay. So that, you don't see every month, you only see that twice a year. So that's why that's being pointed out. The other two things at the very bottom are this and this. So I don't feel like asking these out now.
Yeah. But we want to keep that presenting and I'll just hand those out.
This is the audit report, and then we have.
Here, I got it. Okay.
And then the, the final bound budget book that has the full narrative. Those items are also both on our website. There's a lot to digest in there this time around. The budget book got kind of given to the board in sections, so most of that you've already seen. The, and definitely the back part you've already seen because you proved that in September and that was the, that didn't, nothing changed in that. As far as the audit report goes, the things you have here is you've got a cover memo that just kind of tells you where to look for the summary pages. And then a couple of communications from the auditor. One is a required communication, and then the other one is a brief management letter that talks about the IMRF fund going slightly over budget. And then our estimated financial profile score, where we are estimated to keep, continue our financial profile designation of recognition. So those things are in the treasures report. Are there any questions on any of the, the things that are always there or any of these new pieces? I feel like I haven't backed you, so do you have any questions?
Nope.
It's a lot of information. Most of it's the same every month, but a couple of pieces are new.
And we've continued to put the five-year financial forecast, so anyone who would like to.
It'll be updated soon.
Take a look at what that looks like, you know, five years out, how that projects, where that's going. You can take a look?
Expectation is we, we would update that again. Last time we had it updated in April, we'll probably, similar timeframe, looking to update that again for the board based on this final audit and new information.
And again, after we read through this, we have any questions?
Happy to answer any questions, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Croy. All right. Just then, I need a motion to approve the November 2022 treasures report.
Some of them.
Second. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Dr. Shaw. All right. Any questions or discussions? All right, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Let's move on to our superintendent report.
Well, I have a, a sort of report, one, a very serious thing, just a community thing, just folks in the room to be aware of. We learned, many people might have heard, it was a dreadful train accident yesterday in Lake County, and a teenager lost his life in that accident. And it turns out that's a young man in our community, student at Mill in Calvin Grove. Just want to share that with the board, folks here. You know, sometimes you hear a news story and you think it's far away from you, actually it struck, it's right, right home. Another person in that car was, was killed as well, so just, you know, sad, very sad, very, very tough. You know, thanks for, you know, tradition continues of us giving each other gifts. I have a gift bag for board members and Kathy Maxwell. Her box is cookies, which you probably want to go for that first. You know, that, that's just something from, and I know Mr. Travis handed out scarves, which looked pretty cool, and then, you know, we always want to make you feel part of the team, so we're doing some staff sweatshirts, so want to make you feel, you know, you know, that way. So we just, you know, want to say appreciation, thanks so much. You know, the personal gifts from Kathy Maxwell and I for the opportunity to, to work with you. But I am going to make a suggestion to you, Mrs. Caniva, which you can do and you do not need to vote to do it. But I think all these folks are here for the levy, and we can move past the reports. But I think all these folks are here for the levy and we can move past the reports. You can go down if you would like to entertain the levy now and have that conversation and do your action considerations. We certainly, myself and the administrative team can do our reports to you and we can bridge those and abbreviate those. But that is entirely up to you, Mrs. Lopez Caniva.
Considering the time and stuff and we know some of these people really have to go to work tomorrow, as long with all of us too, so I would definitely, yes. Let me go then to the action consideration items then.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss about options regarding, like alternate options regarding the levy, to possibly, like, if we could.
We could, we can vote on, I mean, we can make the motion, all right, and second it and then we can have a discussion. All right?
Okay.
If it's, okay. All right, do I have the, a motion to approve the resolution levy on taxes for the tax year two thousand and twenty-two?
Some of them.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Now, are there any questions or discussions?
About moving it up? This is about moving it up, right?
No, we're talking about the levy.
We're not talking about the levy. Is that where you wanted to go?
Yes, let's go. So, okay, so let's, let's start then. So what do you, what do you guys?
So a lot of information was presented to us tonight. Ms. Croy, thank you very much for doing so. What I just want to clarify and for everyone in the room, when we talk about cash on hand, six to twelve months of cash on hand for financial recognition. If we don't have six to twelve months of cash on hand, what does that do to our financial recognition?
I don't remember exactly the cutoffs. I can go look those up for you if you'd like, as far as what the parameters are for us to drop. But that recognition will go down. I mean, there are different categories, so if you don't have, you don't meet, it's kind of like the, the grading for the students. If you don't meet the benchmark, you go to the next one.
So if I just make it a comparable analogy to like purchasing a home and getting an interest rate for a home?
Mm-hmm.
How, how would you best explain that, I guess?
Um, that, it's similar, right?
So credit rating, all of that.
Yes, so if we do end up issuing bonds for any reason in the future, which we don't have immediate plans for, but the rating helps, our financial recognition rating helps our bond ratings, that kind of thing, so yes.
So, so the, just to clarify so that I know that I'm hearing this correctly, Central is a very old building, okay? We have a boiler over there that, say, for example, it could go out, all right? If we don't have that six to twelve months cash on hand, our rating is lower. We need to take out a bond, which would essentially be a loan in order to pay for that, okay? So in the long run, it would end up costing our taxpayers more in that interest rate because our rating would be lower because we spent down that money.
It could definitely, yes.
Okay.
What about the deterrent, what about deterring? So even if we were to deter the roof for like one year, what, like how badly is it? Do we have like a status on like how, like, why we need to do it this year instead of, like, when the consumer price index is at its highest and is only projected to go down by next year? Like, why do we have to do the roofing like right now? Is, is there an emergency that the public should know?
Well, so there was a report on the roof last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe that's Mr. Thompson's still in the room, but he is, but...
There's Mr. Thompson.
So, there he is.
Sorry.
We had a, a, a report done on the roofing bef, last year and there are sections of the roof that need to be replaced sooner than later. The sections that we bid are those sections. And if I'm understanding correctly, they're the parts that need full replacement because there's moisture trapped in some of it.
Yeah, yeah, infrared scanning all the roofs in there and these are, these are the parts where there was moisture that got...
So that's...
These roofs are twenty-five years old now.
So that three billion isn't like a complete roof renovation?
No, so we wouldn't have to replace the whole roof anywhere else. This is, we're gonna, this year, in the summer, you know, as you voted on last month, we're gonna be doing the work that needs to be done immediately and a lot of the other ones need to be done five, ten years, you know? Probably not gonna do any roof work next year, next year, this summer, the following year. You know, it's all right on the report, but some of the stuff is three to five, some of the stuff is five to ten years. Some of the roofs are, you know, twenty years we don't have to touch, so, but you know? This is the area where there is moisture under the roof and, you know, moisture inside the building, you know, you, you just, you can't have it, you know?
The other piece about doing it potentially now is we do have ARPS or three funds that, a big chunk of which can be used for this kind of project. So we have in the budget six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars that was ARPS or funds that are intended to help offset the cost of that project.
But they're nowhere near like reaching like a point where there could be like permanent damage to the, like, the building? Or is it just that the moisture's trapped and that's concerning?
Mold, you worry about mold.
You worry about mold? Sorry, that's, that, that was a problem, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And, and, and back to Dr. Shaw's point, one thing with six to twelve months on hand, what that allows you to do is typically with a four million dollar roof project, a, a board would typically go to the voters either for a tax rate increase, which is not this, or would go for bond issue, debt, as one of the speakers said, it's a time of high interest. Usually bonds do better, actually, in high interest times. Having six to twelve months on hand, you have done a number of projects that don't require you to go to the voters. Require you to properly transfer funds to that project as part of your budget, but avoids any kind of bond issue, which the voters do have to pay for the debt service of those bonds. Or asking for a rate change, which is a far more consequential tax issue on people's, our, our line item. Asking to change that rate to pay for that roof. So with six to twelve months of cash on hand, you're able to manage most of your building projects within, within the finances that you have. And you have aging facilities and that's, you know, the, the biggest, you know, question you have to face.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Can you cover again? So when we get our tax money, which we get twice a year, which is what?
September and June.
Yeah. So we got the rest of the school year to pay bills, right? And so what you do is you invest it. So we get a little tax, get some interest on the right.
Right, last few years we haven't got much, but now rates have gone up, so we are getting a little more.
So monthly as bills come due, you take the money out of there, right?
They mature, they're scheduled to mature based on our cash flow.
Yeah. So that's how it works. It's not that we're just sitting on the money.
Right.
The money is...
It's scheduled to pay out, those bills, yeah.
It's like, you talked about the roof. Like if you, at your house, knew you had to, you know, replace a roof in, you know, two years, you would start saving money for it, you know, put it in a savings account. And then when it comes due, time to do it, you would take that money out, you know, and pay for that replacement. So, but we have monthly bills that needs to be paid, but we only get, you know, you might get a monthly check, but we only get our check twice a year.
The big check, yes.
So we got to manage that, that money. It's similar to, I am a senior citizen to people, you know? And I'm retired, I'm, I got a, I got three generations living in my house and I'm the one that's mainly supporting them. I'm on a fixed income. And so I have to manage my money monthly to make sure, like just I gotta take care, you know, the gas bill, the electric bill, you know, the taxes, the water bill, you know, everything that comes through that house comes to me. And I have to make sure I take care of it because I'm the one with the income, with the three generations. So that's how we owe the school, you know, we got, we getting money twice a year. So we have to manage that money to make sure we don't get in February or April and all of a sudden, we ain't got no money to pay the bills. And like you know, you never know about comment and you never know about the gas company when they're gonna, you know, raise the rates. So we do a good job of managing those, those bills. I'll give Mr. Thompson, I give Stephanie, you know, they go out and they, you know, they do a great job of, of making sure that we get the best rate that we can so that the, you know, that the money would last, you know? And you talk about our employee bills, you know, we do creative things with our insurance, you know, so that way that we can afford to give our employees insurance and still, you know, manage our other bills. So we're very, you know, it doesn't look like we're creative, but we are very creative in what we do. So just making you aware, so.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I can, I can also dittle you on that, but yes, I mean, we've been fiscally responsible, we've always been under budget as far as, you know, all our programs and yet we, and his parents have spoken, you know, we've done very excellent as far as programs for activities for our children. And it's really just, and I keep telling people over and over, you want to invest in your schools because that is where people will look at and say, I want to move into that community, you know, and your values of your homes, they do go up, you know, and I don't mind, my, I, that's what I want. I want the value of my home to go up so that when I sell it, I'm gonna get back the investment, that, you know, return on that investment. Because truthfully, your home is your biggest asset, you know, and that's what you want to. You don't want values of your homes to go down and unfortunately, you see it in different parts, especially in Chicago. You see where those values have gone down and that's where people start moving out, you know? And unfortunate, that's when then you start having, I, I hate to say, that's when you start having crime come in, you know? And you have, you know, you have those little slum lords buying up all these properties, you know, and that's where it causes. So it is, it's so unfortunate, but I, I think, you know, our, 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 like I said, our public here, we heard both sides and I think, you know, we like to...
It's nice to hear both sides for once, honestly.
Yes, I agree.
It is really nice and thank you guys all for coming. It's really nice to...
Thank you. Yes, and, and like you said, and that's where, and we, and of course, we listened and we just make the best decision. And thank you, Ms. Croy, for all your work, you know?
We just voted on the bid for it though, right? We don't really have a detailed, I'm just very curious as to how we met, how, like, how three point five million damages in a roof occur? Is it because we're just hiring a lot of people to do it? Is there like special, did, did something specifically get damaged or is it just...
It's just twenty-five-year-old roof, you know, we appreciate that weather here. It's just like everybody else, you have to replace your roof, you know, thirty, twenty-five, thirty years.
It can be, in the summer, it can be a hundred and sixty degrees up there, or it could be what we're, you know, coming to...
Hundred sixty?
Yeah, because it's direct sunlight on a dark surface. And then it can be, you know, minus whatever it's gonna be at the end of this week, so. And we get a lot of moisture in the upper Midwest, so that freezing, thawing, freezing, thawing and, you know, a lot of homeowners here are nodding their heads as they replace their roofs.
I, I don't own a house, I have no idea what roofs are, so.
That's usually the drive.
You're not cheap.
Definitely not.
All right, okay. Since there's no more further questions or discussions, I just need a roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
No.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Moving on to our next is, do I have a motion to approve the amendment to the food service management agreement? I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Caniva and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions or discussions?
And just a reminder, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just remembered, the students were very adamant that food was very important to them when they came in. Everything will be status quo moving on with this country.
Right, what, what this does is really to make a very long story as short as possible. The board is amending this so that we don't have to charge students sales tax on that very important food. So by acting in this way, you're not, you're not changing any terms and services. All you are really doing is that you are, you are deeming in the contract that Quest is acting on your behalf to provide that food service. They become an agent of the school and schools don't charge sales tax, so they don't have to charge sales tax. Otherwise, if we don't take this action, they would have to begin charging on that food sales tax. So we're trying to avoid families making that payment.
This might be a little off topic, but whatever happened to the whole like, we, we charge like seventy-five cents for seniors to eat at the cafeteria thing? To eliminate that stuff?
If you're a gold card member, you can come down in the, in nineteen sixty-nine, the board decided seventy-five cents for gold card members and you have not amended that, so. I tell any gold card member that wants to eat with any, any of us, seventy-nine cents.
So they could take advantage of the newly updated food service management.
They sure, certainly could.
They certainly should now that we're going back to the old plan.
You have to be a gold card member, so.
Oh, yeah.
All right, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the copy paper bid?
Some of them.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions or discussions?
I have a question. I noticed, and we have been purposely doing this, we bring, we've been bringing down how much paper we need over the years. Is the cost so high that, but the costs seem to be, you know, one going this way, one going that other way?
I noticed that too, Luann, yeah.
Yeah, it's not because of the quantities, it's just because of the cost of paper. It's just a creep dramatically like most other things have over the last two, three years, so. It's really not because of the quantity or anything, it's just the cost of paper. Going up, so much you could see, it was pretty stable for ten years and then these last two years it's shot up.
You say it's not because of the volume we get?
No, no.
No, so in two thousand and twenty, we were paying twenty-three dollars a case and now we're paying forty-three dollars a case.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Right.
Yeah. I think that's the way it is everywhere too, because I know Illinois Association of School Business Officials has a peer network where they post questions to each other so we can share information. So school business managers kind of share, what are you paying for this? And this was a recent, fairly recent post that people were, hey, is everybody seeing prices on paper go up this high? So I, I don't think we're the only one, yeah.
I've also noticed that the cases ordered has gone down, so does that mean like we've just, you know, been using, been transferring most of our stuff to Chromebook?
Yeah, since we've gone all Chromebooks, we print less, yes.
That's good.
All right, roll call.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the trade-in used tractor and implements?
Some of them.
What?
Motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions or discussions on that? Hearing none, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right. That finishes our action consideration items and now we're just gonna go with superintendent report.
Yeah, we can go back to the superintendent report and continue on, so happy holidays to everybody.
You are free to go if you want, you can still stay, you're welcome to stay.
You know, it's gonna be a great report for everybody here, so. So happy holidays, hope, I, I really do hope this has been a season, you know, as, as Katie Kishline said, I think people need to relax. Sit back, focus on their families, so to Crestdale, Lockport, Fairmont, Homer Glen, Lamont, Orland Park, Lockport, you know, hope it's a great joyful season. Just a few other things, we continue on, you know, renewal and renovation, probably a new year's resolution for this board. You know, you've explored Central Campus as a far more cost-effective renovation as something that can prevent not only catastrophic failure of mechanicals or masonry, for example, at Central, but also opportunities to use space i- in a different way and we'll, we'll certainly do that in, in the new year. Basically, that's that strategy of a centrally located building that's structurally sound, that can be renovated for far a lot less of a cost than, than a new building and you have about a twenty million dollar expense in front of you if you just kept on going the way you'd be going over the next twenty years. Why not apply some of that future expense to really bringing the building up to a renewed and a renovated state? District goals and reporting on them last month, busy month, but we will, we usually have a dashboard, a goals dashboard. We'll continue that with you, but you're gonna see one-pagers that describe the work that so many of our administrators doing. We'll start sharing that with Dr. Huntington and Dr. Christopherero on the goals that they're working with, their year goals and just how are they working on them. We are hiring a new assistant principal at Central and Dr. Green is heading that up. We have to replace Trish Sermon, she's been a fixture in the district, you know, for, for, and I would support the board revoking her retirement. I don't know if she'd support that. But Principal's Greening, Greening...
No.
I'm joking, it's, it's rubbish.
It's rubbish.
Uh, but Principals Green and Green are, are heading that up. New year, new app. Uh, we went to a much better, um, provider for our, um, uh, our website. If you look at our website, the new look on November first is that new provider. But also, we get with that, and Mr. Slager's been working overtime, we get an app. And that's really to honor that so many people nowadays are just using their mobile phone, making it easy to get notifications, look at information. And you know that an app is a better program of a website than going to a website on your cell phone. It's also more cost-effective for people, because when you try to go to a website on your cell phone, you have to download a lot of data, um, if you're not on Wi-Fi.
So would the board?
What?
Would the board be able to use the app?
Oh, yeah, everybody in this room can use the app. Uh, once we launch it new year, and, you know, for people on limited data plans, just tapping our website, downloading that data to their phone can start eroding. An app is just, doesn't use as much. And then global competency, just something I want to continue putting on the, uh, board's, uh, you know, um, agenda. We are talking quite a bit, we're doing so much right here locally. Uh, but two things we're looking at with global competency and your commitment to community service are, one, a service trip, uh, that students might be able to participate in, in the fall, to go to the Dominican Republic to do service. And I would encourage you to allow them to do, uh, service hours. And then also, an extension of some curriculum, uh, the eightieth anniversary of D-Day is coming up in twenty twenty-four, and that could be a substantial, you know, community service, uh, trip by learning just about the contributions of our service, men and women, um, at D-Day. Those beaches in Normandy, fairly important, significant. Yeah.
Uh, I believe in that, but I have some concerns.
Do you want to explore your concerns as, as we move forward? I'm really doing more of an advertisement, but it's up to you, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, we can do it going forward.
Okay.
I'm looking at the, the, uh, the instability of the world.
Oh, the, oh, yeah, global instability?
Instability, yeah.
Yeah, it's something.
But anyway, we can talk about it.
Yeah, I know, we'll be kind of bringing more of that, you know, forward to you for exactly those kind of concerns. Right, international travel, you know. I, I always recommend that board's plan on international travel, you do have to have exits if you have instability in a part of the world, you know, which can be a very real thing. That, that's my report.
Thank you. Moving on then to our information reports, curriculum.
And I'm sorry, there are two chairs up there, so.
We're going to be very brief, how's that?
Do I just pull one over? Oh, there's, Chivalry is not dead yet, Bill Thompson, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just, um, wanted to just kind of touch base about our solution tree work, um, with our outside consultant Troy Gobble. Um, we had to reschedule one of our sessions, uh, due to illness. Apparently the flu is a real thing, um, for some people. So we rescheduled that to today, and so Troy did come in and work with our guidance counseling teams on, um, their processes in order to make sure that we're, you know, culling the information we have about students, the data, and then being able to provide, um, supports and services to students across the board. And then he also met with our department chairs and our leadership group in the afternoon, um, and continued their work of, of developing information and, um, processes for their leadership and their PLCs as well.
Uh, I, I just wanted to share a little bit more with you about, um, School Links, which is our new program that helps students with college and career preparation for the future. So I gave you one graphic in the report, but I really wanted to share with you about our students' overall usage of this between July thirteenth and today. So I just pulled this data right before this meeting, and really, students, we've had twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty unique logins. So that could be one student going on several times, in fact, we know it is because we know our student population. But what does that mean, that students are going on and looking at careers, at, um, career clusters, taking interest inventories to plan for their future? So, um, I shared with you about their career clusters. Um, right when I went on before, we can see and monitor the student activity. One student just favored ISU as their destination. Another student finished a find-your-path activity. And another student had updated their career goal to become a registered nurse. Um, you can click on students and see how the individual student is doing. And all this is to follow up with Dr. Huntington said about, we want to be data-driven in our decision-making to support students through our use of our guidance counselors and deans. You know, we talked about that with our Five Lab analytics tool, and here's another tool that helps us better support our students as they make plans for the future.
So based off of this, the career goal breakdown currently, the bulk of our students want to go into some sort of healthcare, healthcare field.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that tells us, like, who do we want to come in on those, um, career day, career week? Um, it lets us help them decide classes to affirm that or get them in there to say, nope, that's not the right place for me to be.
Do we still do that internship thing with Santa Claus? So that if someone's interested in that, maybe they could be steered towards that? Is that in there? No?
It's, it's not in there, but that's something we definitely want to build and make more robust.
Right.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and Merry Christmas to everyone. Like Dr. McBride said, John and I have been very busy, um, because we have started the interview process for Trish's position, and if I could revoke her retirement, I wish, I really would. I really would. She's been amazing, and so she's left some big shoes to fill. Uh, but we have done some Google, uh, meetings and screened over thirty candidates so far. So we will, um, head into the next round after the first of the year when we get back. In your report, you saw activities. It's been a wonderful holiday season with concerts and activities, and as always, our amazing Madrigal, uh, dinner took place. It was sold out, the tickets were hard to come by. And then our winter sports are off to a great start. I want to say thank you to our students, our staff, and the community. We had two great events where we honored the veterans, over a hundred veterans. And last Friday, um, we had our cancer, um, Porters versus Cancer Night, where all the proceeds go to our St. Baldricks event. We had, in forty-eight hours, we sold over six hundred and fifty T-shirts. Um, and it was actually the largest, um, student section I think we've ever had at a basketball game. So we appreciate, um, the support from everyone for those two big events. It really, really was phenomenal, um, to see our, our students come out as well.
And you have asked us to highlight an area or something that we are working on right now as principals. So I chose to give you an inside look at our evaluation process of our certified teachers. That is something that myself, Carrie, the assistant principals, and department chairs really begin very close to the beginning of the school year. Uh, that goes throughout the school year, particularly for our non-tenured staff. We're focusing on them a little bit more, um, just simply for timely reasons, because they need to be, those evaluations need to be finished by the end of February. But it, it is a process that's very valuable. It allows us as administrators and department chairs to work one-on-one with our teachers. Also counselors, social workers, school psychologists and deans as well, our certified staff, to ensure that our goals, um, that we are looking at, particularly our PLC process, the reason why we have the late start Wednesday, to focus our planning conversations on what the formal evaluation is going to be. And we want to take a look at, uh, the learning targets for that particular lesson, how it's going to be assessed, what success looks like, what things would be done, um, if the student is not quite getting the learning targets, and then if there are any extension opportunities. So it is a process that also involves an informal evaluation, where we pop in for maybe twenty-five, thirty minutes. The planning conversation, as I just mentioned, the formal evaluation itself. And then we finish up with a reflective conversation to talk about the things that we were able to see, to talk about our ratings, to get feedback, to, to give the teacher, uh, the opportunity to reflect as well, and then to talk about those things. And we certainly feel like we bring our expertise from our past teaching and also our work to keep up with current practice. But I truly find it's also a learning experience for me. Being out of the classroom, um, for about ten years now, uh, of course, I keep up with best practice, but I'm not in the classroom, and I truly learn from working with our teachers during this process as well. In fact, earlier this year, uh, there was an English teacher who shared with me something that her and her team, um, implement with students in terms of helping them practice formulating questions. We talk about how that's an important part, students asking questions, but if not really practicing that, you can't always expect them to ask questions in class. So that's just one example of, of the working relationship that we have. Yes, it's an evaluation process, of course, but it's also an opportunity for us to work as instructional leaders, but to also learn from our teachers as well. So that's just a little bit of an inside look at how our evaluation process works, something that is very time-consuming but very worthwhile. Any questions on that? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
There in your, there you have your overnight field trip, there's two of those.
And, and really, those are just to inform the board. We've got, uh, baseball heading down to Southern Illinois, St. Louis. That'll be in March, uh, right before spring break. Just, you know, getting that kind of competition, probably getting some better weather, weather as well. And then you've got ski trip, extremely popular, um, just where they're going, where they'll be. And, you know, so many of those trips here in Illinois, we're not known for our mountains, so we have to go to other places. So you see that?
Thank you. All right, then you have the maintenance report.
Maintenance report, you know, I think, um, you know, Mr. Thompson can add to it, um, but just, I think there's the proper acknowledgement of, we have had so much going on in our calendar. Madrigals, Junior Porters, huge, huge, uh, wrestling event over the weekend, it was incredible. We had Will County Share Fest the week before. You know, one of the speakers mentioned, we, we fed about three thousand people in that, that partnership. You know, and it's not only, um, not only the setup and all the backbone that, uh, Mr. Thompson's staff has to provide, but when the building is up and running, you know, it doesn't rest on Sunday or Saturday. It is all of, you know, the things, all the mechanicals and things that are necessary. Uh, you've got furniture and flooring projects, some, you know, very old, dated, dirty. Carpeting is coming up at the district office, it's been there since nineteen ninety-nine. We had a long, a retirement of a longtime employee, uh, Bill, Bill Froling, who retires, it's sad to see Bill go, and all that maintenance knowledge that went with him, but we're wishing him all the best. But you can also see some of the things that we're doing right now in turn for every board meeting. Um, they can't vote, it can't be in closed session, um, but they can share the student perspective as, as, you know, members of, members at the table, um, if the board would like to go forward with that.
Are they independent, refresh my memory again, are they independent of student government?
I, I would suggest that they're independent and that you do, as a board, you do an application procedure where students can apply, um, where there's a small subcommittee of you who interviews those students to make a decision about, um, who you would appoint. That's the procedure we would use if a member had to resign.
Does it only have to be two?
I, I'm recommending what Mrs., yeah, it can be two, it can be one. The, the policy, um, you know, uh, we have two campuses. I think an equal representation of students at Central or East is what I would recommend to you.
No, that's what I was saying, is that, is it two per campus or just two?
I would recommend a total of two. You know, and, and this policy revision allows you to appoint student representatives. The procedure is, is, is a little bit different. Scrolling through these, there's some press conflict of interest, some school board member organization. After an election, state laws change that you have instead of twenty-eight days to reorganize your board, you have forty days to reorganize your board. That's the maximum amount of time that you can take to have a board reorganization meeting that begins when the, um, election is canvassed and, and, and completed. So you'll see some of these policies that relate to conduct, uh, Title IX, sexual harassment, some that are financial and, and business. Some of these we're already doing in terms of, uh, cash balance of funds, levy hearings. Waiver of student fees, this one relates to students who are homeless, students who have, their parents are in the military. And, um, what we can and cannot in terms of fees for those students, in general, they're, um, exempt. This is, uh, one of the conduct issues that our staff has to be aware of, prevention of child sex abuse and any kind of grooming behaviors. Aligning, this is professional, not student conduct. You see it again here in policy five colon twenty. Uh, you see it again in five colon one twenty. This is a code of ethics among employees. Substitute teachers, um, in terms of their licensure, this is to encourage substitute teaching. This is leaves of absence aligned to, uh, new state law related to the COVID-nineteen, uh, vaccination and, um, eligibility, uh, for administrative leave related to, um, the, uh, COVID-nineteen. This is a simple change, instead of calling licensed staff certified, changing it to licensed or non-licensed. This is employee termination suspension related to sexual misconduct and how the state superintendent can revoke an educator's license. You used to have to go through that process, uh, local school boards, now the state superintendent is taking that. Evaluations, I cannot fit Katie Kishline, I might still be here, but she might not, Tony Candari could do it. There have been so many changes in the pandemic to evaluation. It just aligns to state school code. Same with sick days vacation, this is related to COVID illnesses. School year calendar, um, this basically, uh, is paying employees and contractors, uh, the regular rate of pay if the employee or contractor would have worked on an e-learning day. If we have an e-learning day and because of that weather emergency, you can't work, because the district has chosen to do that, you would still, uh, if the day's not rescheduled, receive that pay. Uh, this is important, this is the second one, two colon forty. Seven colon seventy has been changed, and we do have to file that with the state. It's attendance intruency. What it does is you can see middle and high school students to be permitted one school day-long excused absence per school year to engage in a civic event. And then requires that every two years, a board to update its absenteeism intruency policy and file it with ISBE. And then implementing absenteeism intruency policy requirements, all the things, you have it in your policy, reasons why students can be absent, and consequences if students are truant. You are in alignment with this language with what ISBE requires? Questions? You know, this is a first reading, you're not approving this tonight?
Were you in alignment before this was approved?
No, you had to add this language, Mr. Navara, the civic event is, is new, that you agree to file your attendance intruency every two years. And the third one, you're already in alignment with. It's really the first and, and second that are new. Any questions I can answer? So first reading.
I, I think you have one-day excuses to go college visiting.
Right, this adds to a civic event, a governmental event.
Like being an election judge?
Being an election judge.
They can't, because they can't vote enough.
You can be an election judge, even if you can't vote, sixteen or over, so.
Oh.
All right, um, so that was policy. Mrs. Lopez, can we, would you like me to jump in? And we'll, we'll jump to approval next month. So please, if you have any questions as you look at these policies, and this is also for the public to look at these policies as well.
If you're thinking of poll watcher, actually.
That would be a civic event.
Yeah, poll watching would work, but not election.
All right. Um, this is a first reading of, uh, we, um, replaced our public safety officers, really the same cost with school resource officers from the city of Lockport, which I think is an astute decision. We also, because we have schoo- school resource officers now, the board has to have a reciprocal reporting agreement with the city of Lockport, which means this agreement, this is a first reading, it hasn't been approved, um, they've done a first reading in the city of Lockport. This governs legally what information the police can share with us, what information we can share with the police. It primarily centers on clear and present danger. It primarily centers on clear and present danger. And it defines very clearly what is information that can be shared between those entities versus information that is protected under the Federal Educational Privacy Rights Act or the School Records Act. So it defines, it's not just everything. The specific reasons why the police would share information with us, we would share information with the police. This has been reviewed by the city's attorney, it's been reviewed by our attorneys at Robin Schwartz. And the city agreed to all of the changes that we requested. Any questions about reciprocal reporting? All right, that is, that is that first reading. We'd probably come back, it's online to be approved, and ask for your approval next month, unless you have some objections or things that you see that just don't, don't really work as you read that kind of. To Mrs. Johnson's point about, about police officers in buildings, right? That's become a very important issue, and this really now deals with how police officers and we deal with student records protections. Okay?
Great, announcements?
Announcements, all right, winter break, it's coming. We hope that the snowstorm does not interrupt it. But our district office will be closed December 23rd, December 26th, December 30th, and January 2nd. Our winter institute day, I always share that with board members. You are more than welcome, I'll send you information about the morning. Kind of a nice time to be with the staff. I'm sure President Lopez Caniva would like to say a few words in the morning to the staff. First day of the second semester will be January 10th. We'll observe Martin Luther King Day, but again, we're going to do day on. So we're going to encourage students, instead of taking a day off, do a day on. And we're already partnering Jen Crosby, Lori Christophero, Angela Adolf with partners who we can send students out and do community service in the community. And my favorite that I did last year is I joined Mr. Thompson's crew and did cleaning in East Campus. So it was fun, you know, dust, clean windows that don't usually get cleaned. It was great, it was a really good day to do that with kids.
So what are the other activities that besides this?
Oh gosh, where's, where are we going in the community?
The, the City of Lockport is having, there's like the Canal Trails, Lincoln Landing, a couple other places. I'm so sorry, I was tapping my head. We're going to host an open gym for some of the theater schools, so that when their parents are off, on that day, that our kids would help staff the, like an open gym so that the kids had somewhere to be that day.
We're hoping for games at a senior community center where our students would go and play games. And then many of our students are volunteering to make word walls for teachers, whoever EL students in their classrooms.
And EL is English language learners.
Yeah, so the people want proficient in English.
Right.
Right. So any board members who would like to join me with Bill Thompson's crew and dust and clean windows?
Maybe not clean and dust.
You are more than welcome, you are more than welcome, we would welcome you. Then we will see you in January 23rd for your January board meeting in, in the new year.
Great. Thank you. I just need a motion to adjourn. The motion by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis, all in favor.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a nice Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, have a great.